Okay, I'm gonna call the ordinance subcommittee meeting Wednesday, September fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. To order. I think we're all here. Uh, do we have any minutes? I don't think so. We haven't met in a while, have we? Do we? I think we do have minutes. Are those the ones that we emailed? Cause I remember reading them. Have we approved them?
No, we have not approved these. I have copies. Any additional copies?
I've already read it. I mean, if you, that's the one you sent. Yeah. Um, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of?
So, I haven't seen them yet, so I'll just...
Okay.
I'll just put it on.
Okay. All those in favor?
Alright.
Sounds good. We can send those on to Barbara. Uh, so we have on our agenda tonight, uh, food trucks and we can discuss plastic bags. I, I hope, uh, Councilor Smith, you don't feel like we've been railroading the efforts for this. It's, you know, I think summer is a little...
No.
summery.
No, not at all.
Okay.
I'll tell you where I am on everything.
That'd be great. You wanna give us a quick update and see where we're going?
Do you wanna start with food trucks or do you wanna start with plastic bags?
Either, either is fine. Um, I can give you, if you guys, I have an update on food trucks. Um, I just have to open up my, since I wasn't, went to print and my internet's down, my phone is down, my TV's down. Everything at my house is off.
Really?
Yeah, so I called Charter. They're like, oh, it's not...
He built this crazy sign up and blew it.
Yeah, I know. I know, I know, I know. Um, so what I did was, uh, I took, uh, the, the last time we met about, um, food trucks, Barbara was here. And, um, I took, uh, is this the wrong account? Oh, that's right. Um, so we looked at, um, some of the issues that were brought up. And I went through and addressed each of those issues, uh, and typed it. So if I, as soon as I can find it here, I will, uh, share it with you guys. And I'm thinking that maybe this is in my school account. Let's see. And, oops. This is awkward.
Well, do you want me to start?
Yeah, why don't you start while I try to see if I can find this.
So, I've really been doing a lot of thinking about where we stand with the plastic bags. Now, we had the first hearing, which we just invited the public to, and I feel like it split into two factions of the public. Businesses versus private citizens. So then the next meeting, as you both know, was just, okay, here, comparison of the different post-solutions and the different available solutions that are there right now. And I think each of those solutions have their pros and cons to them. And now we're at a point where it's like as, plastic bags is a social movement issue, is picking up with a lot of people within the city who have an interest in it. So, I don't know if you saw, there was a letter to the editor from a daughter and her mother encouraging us to pass the ordinance. And there was...
Thirteen year old, if I remember.
Yeah.
Oh, huh?
And I, there was another person, um, her name is Mary, who's retired and asked if she could be a part of this. For me, one of the problems that I've had from a planning standpoint is how much of the planning for really considering whether or not to pass the plastic bag ordinance should be part of the ordinance committee, just compared to more of a social movement on behalf of the city. Because I think that in order for plastic bag ordinance to be successful and to be embraced by the public, there seems to be a little, needing to be a little more public push for, hey, let's embrace this. And without any funding from, or organization from the mayor's side of the thing, I feel like we could be putting a lot of ideas on the table that could probably be like, well, that's a great idea, but... And not really have the time or the resources to do it. So, I was thinking, I wanted to propose tonight, how you both would feel about putting together or requesting that the mayor put together a standing committee on waste management in East Hampton? Because it seems like plastic bags are part of a larger issue.
Definitely.
When we look at, for example, some of the, um, I don't know if you caught this last week, where the, um, county waste, we had to go to the public hearing because they have not been correctly picking up their trash. So a lot of people are complaining about maggots in their, you know, in their neighborhoods and a lot of just... So I think the issue that is being highlighted because of county waste is the fact that we have no trash system within East Hampton. So I feel like to move forward with, hey, let's push a plastic bag ordinance without addressing that at all is really leaving us open to be susceptible to, you didn't really plan this out very well. And I feel like a lot of, so, in an ideal world, if I had unlimited time and resources, I think an actual survey to go to the businesses about what is their stop point for how much could they have, you know what I mean? Will they always be against this? If, what are some different solutions? To even put those solutions out on the table, I think require more of a commitment than what we have in our ordinance committee. So, for example, if Biggie, we, we heard in the meetings that Biggie's are really into the post-consumer recycled bags. If they were to make that available, if the company that supplies Biggie's was willing to make those bags available to the rest of the city, we as an ordinance committee, what would your role in that be?
Right.
And it...
Well, and it's interesting because I did, you know, so I did dug a little bit on and look and noticed that the, the bags that Biggie uses are actually quite similar to the bags that other places use. Um, it's just they have better, it's a, it's marketed more effectively in a green way. It's a green bag. It is printed on the bag, like, this is an eco-friendly bag, but really, it's a plastic bag.
Yeah.
Um, and a lot of the other plastic bags that have taken from other places are made from, you know, a decent percentage of post-consumer recycled plastic.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's, that's an interesting thing. Uh, you know, and I, as far as, you know, my, my thoughts on it, I, I actually agree to some extent with you. And, and I, I'm not exactly sure, you know, as far as us trying to solve a problem um, through l- legislation, um, I think that, that there is a valid role for that. You know, saying, hey, we, we understand the environmental impacts, the community-wide impacts. And so because we see this as something that is impacting our community, we should take steps to mitigate that, those impacts. Um, and, and I don't think that, you know, I think if we did say, hey, we're gonna ban plastic bags in East Hampton, I think it would be, it would affect such a, it would affect a very small group of people. So, I mean, I'm thinking, just off the top of my head, right, Manchester's, Amy's Place, Seven-Eleven, Dollar Store.
Right-Aid.
Um, Rite Aid.
Yeah.
So the, the, uh, and that's really, there might be one or two more. Well, I think he was worried about the Styrofoam. I don't think he was...
Except that they still, I think they still use...
Maybe they still use plastic bags.
And I think many of the takeout restaurants use plastic bags.
A lot of the takeout restaurants use plastic bags, yeah.
So, so I think it affects quite a few businesses.
Yeah.
And potential businesses that would come here or go elsewhere.
I don't think anybody would...
Come, choose to come here and not go back to come here because of the plastic bag.
Right, yeah.
But I will say, in an incident between our last meeting and this meeting, where the plastic bag, the bag, the bag that I had, I'm so glad that we had a plastic bag because the interior bag that it was, it leaked on, after coming home from the restaurant.
Right.
It was just, my gosh, I'm so glad they used plastic. It would've been all, all over the car. Uh, so, I've had real mixed feelings about this.
I mean, yeah, I...
I've been thinking that we really ought to move forward and say, yes, and I, and I thought, I really think the answer is to, is to go with the post, uh, post, the recycled plastic. And it's marketed as recycled plastic, and it is recycled plastic bags, sure. But that really seemed like taking a positive step forward. Because it answers a lot of the questions, you know, can you use a second bag? Can the bag be used another time or recycled itself? Or, because people, a lot of people use them for trash bags, a lot of people use them for the dog poop. But, okay, but there's a lot of reuses. What would we really do if we didn't have that available to us?
And that...
So, all of the, and then the science that we've brought forward so far really has been conflicting in many ways. Pro and con, ban the plastic bag, the plastic bag, you know, paper's worse if, if we use paper bags. So that is an alternative here, but it sounded like, like, the eco-friendly type bag at least gets people thinking about bags. And also, maybe thinking about bringing their own bags.
I mean, I guess that's the other side to it that I was thinking, like, if we're really, it seems to me that out of everything that, from the science part that we research, is that to encourage people to use fewer anything, you know, is...
Well, because this is all part of the bigger picture, not only of waste, but here, but also all...
Right.
Everything that we do on the planet and...
Yeah, I mean, so one of the things that, you know, that I was thinking that would make sense for us to move forward was some guidelines through an ordinance that required businesses that put these out into East Hampton to follow some general, um, rules, basically. So, if you are CVS or Rite Aid or one of those businesses that gives out these plastic bags, then you have to have a place to accept them back.
Okay.
You know?
Does it matter how big the business is?
Well, I think, so for, you know, for me, if you are a bag, a, a store that is giving out those bags every transaction, you should be responsible for allowing people to bring those backs, those bags back into recycle. But if you're like, say, Amy's Place, or if you're Nene's and someone's getting a bag, one bag for a takeout, I mean, that's a different scale.
So, I think even with the recycling bit, for food businesses, it's different from a, um, retail shop because a food business is more likely to have food waste on the bag that would make it ineligible for that anyway. But if, I, I like the idea of, if you're going to keep the plastic bags, you need to be part of the solution by offering a place to recycle. Um, I would also say having sign for doors to, don't forget your, your bag. But the, this is where I get caught up. We don't have a budget to be able to, you know, so, so then it comes to that real, um, fuzzy part of, well, how big of a recycle bin do they need to put it? What are they, what do they have to do with it? And they put them into, well, we have different businesses collecting a bunch of bags and then going to Biggie and stuffing them in Biggie's receptacle and, you know...
If they're creative, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and another, so that was one of my thoughts, and I think, you know, the logistics of it.
Maybe, maybe that requires some research, you know, what, what the practical nature of it is.
Yeah, logistics of it can be worked out. I, I think just the, kind of the concept is, you know, right now, we're kind of still in the, we still don't, you know, we're still not looking at a specific ordinance. We're kind of in the conceptual phase.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, so, and I think another thing that I thought made, as all of the ideas were thrown out, that made sense to me was having a nickel or a dime, um, fee for, per bag. So if you wanted, you know, and I think it was like, a lot of people were talking about Europe. If you go to Europe, you just don't get a bag unless you ask for it, and then you have to pay for it. Um, I, I think that, to me, you know, money, money talks. And even if it's a nickel.
I agree. And I was...
And then there go, there's your budget.
Well, that's one of the things I was gonna suggest. I was thinking about, okay, if we did have this system, one of the ways that communities have been really torn after that decision is that there's some businesses who are making money off of bags now. Cause they're giving money, they're, they're charging it, but no one's responsible for that money in the end. So, if you look at the specifics of East Hampton, I think one of the things that has... There, there are different funding streams that I think we could encourage this to go to. Um, it could be to go to the East Hampton Community Center, it could go to our public schools, it could go to the parks, it could go to any number of things. But I think that we need to have some plenary meetings with the mayor to say, you know, which one of these would you be willing to stand behind?
And, and we'd wanna make sure, because we, we don't wanna get ourselves in a situation where people are thinking that we're, we're tax, we're not allowed to tax.
Yeah.
You know, this would be, we'd have to be clear that this is a fee. And we'd have to, that would, that part would have to work, we'd have to figure out and see how other communities are doing it.
Yeah.
It's interesting, I did notice that, uh, last, I think it was last week or the week before, Chickpea is looking at this now. Um, and they have quite a few stores. I mean, they have like Home Depots and Lowe's and like all those big stores, um, so they're looking at this. And, and I think, you know, I mean, it could be, I, I mean, I've heard echoes of this, the state is looking at this on a, on a, on a large scale.
Yeah.
You know, but, hey, if we can find a creative solution before those things happen, that raise awareness, helps, you know, mitigate the problem, um, and doesn't cause too much anxiety or hardship. I, I think that really should be what our goal is.
So, when North Hampton had the bag ban, one of the things that they did leading up to it was to have, in North Hampton way, they do a lot of those public rallies. So they had a public rally that they also had this huge bag of all the, a huge ball of the bags. And I still think that East Hampton, one of the ways that we're very different from North Hampton is we don't do, we don't do rallies, but we do a lot of art displays.
Sure.
And I feel like this is the type of thing that I think we have, we have, um, an art gallery right in East Works that could be used to really highlight this. It could be in a number of ways, again, that gets away from ordinance, so I just...
I, I don't mind this going away from ordinance, I would much prefer that the community did something to lead the way toward a better future by being responsible and having to be an ordinance, believe me. That's, would be my preference. And I think we are short on having community support because we need it. I think community buy-in for this.
Yeah.
I think...
I, I really question whether we're there.
I think for an outright ban, I think you're right, but I think for maybe some of those other steps, I think people would be appreciative. I, I, and I don't necessarily, I got, and I also feel like, at, from what I heard at the meetings, what I took away was that most people were in support of some sort of regulation around plastic bags.
We're talking about twenty-five people.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, like, the representative sample that came up.
To take this forward.
And like, and at that first meeting, it was really, there was really one person against it, and he was talking more about Styrofoam.
Yeah.
And, and that took up a majority of the, the meeting. I mean, that, that conversation was, you know, by far the longest. Um, and, and I would say, at that meeting, there was, almost everybody else came up and was, was supporting, um, some sort of, some sort of, not necessarily outright ban, but some sort of kind of thoughtful regulation.
And that's why I feel like having a standing committee to address this, where you have people who are really into environmentalists, that's like, environmentalism and plastic bags, like, they're named thing. When you can get someone with that type of, um, energy to give to it, I think that a standing committee could create that kind of community response in a way that, as an ordinance committee, in the name ordinance committee in and of itself, there's type of this Big Brother fear that people have of it. So I, I feel like if we could partner with a standing committee to say, here are the objectives of what we wanna find out within the next year and create that survey, have it go out to the businesses, survey the school districts to see if they would be interested in being a part of that, and then seeing if the mayor would be interested in highlighting this as an issue, we could move forward as more of a community rather than the ordinance subcommittee at the city council. There's always the possibility that the mayor could be like, this is really not my priority. Nice idea, but no.
And, I mean, it is, unfortunately, uh, it is difficult to fill committees. Unless you have a group of people that are chomping on the bag.
I have had a lot of people who are contacting me saying they wanna work on this, that they think this is a worthwhile cause. So I, in that respect, I think that this is a little different from other...
And, and I think that's great, but I'm, I'm still, I still think that as a committee, it would make sense for us to look at some of those kind of less invasive, um, ideas to craft something that, you know, we think might have a positive impact without an, without impacting businesses in a negative way. Cause I think there are some of those things, I mean, I think we can do some of that. And I don't necessarily think that we're gonna get a bunch of, of public outcry, uh, and I think that, it's, you know, it's kind, it's almost like a intermediate step. We're not banning them outright, but we are saying, you know, that if you are gonna use these and, and pro-proliferate these into our community, then you, there's certain steps you're gonna have to take. Like, you need to use a certain type of bag that is a certain amount of post-consumer recycled waste. You have to have a place to recycle them, you have to, or maybe, you know, and we, and we still have to have, don't, not at a place where we have anything written down, but maybe there's some sort of fee that goes to the parks and rec, you know, to clean up some of the, you know, like, the areas that they maintain. Um, so that, that's, that's my personal feeling on that, is that we don't just give it up altogether.
Oh, I don't wanna give it up altogether.
Okay.
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna not be thoughtful about all the other options. Because I think without... We don't have any data in front of us, and we don't have a waste system here. So I think it does leave us open to a lot of resentment if it's not planned out to a better level. So here's one example of how that, so, in October, the, um, East Ham, ECA Plus has a, um, they do a round of grants for art within the community. What if we were to ask the ECA Plus coordinator if they would have any, like, have a contest of a logo for, go back to the car and look for a bag? Or something like that? You know, but...
Yeah.
I like that.
Because I think it capitalizes on the art community that we have here.
Absolutely. I, I think that's, I mean, that's definitely tapping into, those resources is, is, I think, gonna be really beneficial. And who knows, maybe the mayor would be interested in getting involved in that, like you said. I think, uh, I think that's great. That could be good.
Is that feasible?
I would say, yeah.
I wonder if there's ever, I mean, I think certainly that's feasible, but I also wonder if there's, if there's grant money available to help communities through this kind of question. At this point, and so many communities are doing it. It seems that somebody oughta tackle it for some reason, I don't know.
But a lot of the grant money that is available for that requires a before and after assessment of how much plastic bags are going out into the community. So, if we could come up with a way to measure that, that doesn't include our trash system, that, I think it's big, I think it's Big Y in, no, actually, it was Wegmans in Syracuse. But they were looking at how many bags they were having to order this year compared to last year as a comparison, as a way to measure that.
It'd be interesting if we asked, you know, the stores that use them, how many do you order?
Yeah.
A year?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, that's one way to gather some data.
Yeah.
Is, uh, you know, and I guess it's self-reporting, but it'd be interesting.
But that does seem like the kind of thing that if we could at least have some sort of record showing how, not just the talk of it, but also here are some ways that we could show the implementation of this and how that was working. That could be, um...
You could, I mean, you know, like, it was interesting, cause at the end of the day, it really doesn't seem like paper is that much better necessarily. Um, I think it is probably better on, you know, anyway. But when you look at the, the bigger picture, it's, it's not as good as you would think it is.
I wouldn't say it's the only answer available.
It's not.
And I think that's been a real problem with a lot of the ordinance and surrounding communities, is they treated paper as the only solution.
So, you know, I think, I, what I love is the, and I think this could be such a great solution, and it involves ECA Plus, is to have those, um, those designs put on more permanent shopping bags and have, like, kinda like Bear Fest, but, and have these avail...
Bag Fest.
Bag Fest. You know, so have those bags that artists design available around town. And, you know, and, and, and have some, figure out a way to make them so they're affordable, super affordable. You know, so you could get a reusable bag and you're getting, you know, oh, I, I forgot mine. And then, well, if it's only a buck, then big deal. And you get a cool decorated bag, you know? I don't know. I think that could be a cool solution. I don't know the, the ordinance subcommittee role in that.
That's, that's what I come up against too, because I'm like, oh, well, if we could commission artists to make those bags and then we sold them for a dollar a piece, even if we had a thousand dollar bags sold, that's a thousand dollars to put for...
But then again, then I also don't wanna sell our position short because I think that in a lot of ways, we're in a position to dictate the drive towards that. You know, if we, if we decided to pass an ordinance and said, no more plastic bags, there'd be a lot more impetus for that to happen. That might happen more organically if we said, no plastic bags. Or if we said, feed to a plastic bag. And so, we, we're in this kind of precarious situation where if we act, if we don't act, then nothing could happen.
Yeah.
If we act, something could happen, or, I mean, you know what I mean?
Consumer behavior changes prior to consumer attitude when it comes to the plastic bags. People will change their habits. They'll do it begrudgingly and they'll be like, oh, taking his room, but they will change their habit.
Right.
I agree. Waiting for the public to say, now is the time.
Right, that might not ever happen. That's a lot of faith in the public.
But I think if we were to say, okay, we have this six-month window, let's see how much we can generate with the different, with the different, um, factions of the community towards publicizing this and getting the community behind that, behind it, knowing that eventually that change will be coming. I guess we would just need to figure out how to ask the different, how to get that into motion.
Sure.
Um, and I, I'm happy to talk to, to the mayor and to the superintendent of schools and stuff. Um, would it be helpful for, it's helpful for me to always see things written down, like, we just, if we hear our choices, here's what we decide, it doesn't work, and here are some possible next steps.
Yes.
Would it be helpful, I'll go ahead and do that?
Yeah, and I would really like to see, I mean, I would love for us to work on some, and, and start drafting, you know, like, have multiple streams going. I would like to see us draft an ordinance that puts out some of those, you know, non-invasive, more, um, but it's proactive.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so I, I would like to see us create something like that, where we're looking at the, if you give them out, you should have a place for, to bring them in. If, um, you know, you should use, uh, a, a bag with a certain amount of post-consumer, you know, and that's gonna take some research on our part and see what the price difference is. I think that's gonna be critical, that, that piece is critical.
Those types of things, I think would be great for a committee. A committee that's interested in this, if they can call local suppliers and say, hey, can you tell us what your price might be?
Right.
Those are the types of things that I find a little overwhelming as a city councillor.
Well, if we, I mean, if we, but if we say that these are three things that we wanna explore as a committee, we could split those up, you know, so it wouldn't just be on you. Like, for example, I could, I could look into what, you know, the cost difference between different levels of recycled bags.
Yeah.
Um, JP could look into, you know, the impact of charging a, a fee for, um, per-use bag. Um, and you could look into the, like, so we could, I mean, that obviously doesn't have to be split up that way, but those are, because I think those, those three things are things that would not raise, um, business owners' alarm necessarily. Like, those, I mean, they're not super intrusive.
Yeah.
Um, they're not necessarily gonna cost them a lot of money. Um, and it's not like we're banning plastic bags like other communities have. We're just saying, we think that these things might be a good way to maybe take the next step towards this particular issue. So, I'm, I'm thinking that, um, we think about this until our next meeting and decide what of, what of those issues, if not more. Like, I don't know, I can't, I can't remember if there's some other ones that were in there that were kind of non-invasive, that made sense. Um, and then maybe start doing some research into it. I mean, I don't think that we would be looking to bring this to the council next month or anything.
Yeah.
But, um, I think it would be good to get something down on paper and, and start moving forward.
And like...
I, I think both could work. I think you could, if you wanted to explore the possibility of have, how to formulate a committee outside of the ordinance group, that's perfectly legitimate.
Absolutely, parallel track.
Parallel track.
Yeah.
I mean, a pretty subcommittee chair, so I think that's a good fit for, yeah.
Well, I, I wanna drop our discussion while we wait.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we should continue. I like the idea of continuing.
What about a survey monkey? A survey monkey survey to, to ask the Chamber of Commerce president to share with the chamber?
See, I don't think that, I, I'm not sure the... See, I don't think the, I I'm not sure the chamber's the place, but yes, a survey.
Okay.
The idea of a survey, I think, makes lots of sense.
Mm-hmm.
If if there was a group in schools that really wanted to pursue a product project and create a survey.
I know a teacher at the middle school, Anna Lawrence, is really interested in working with her class on this issue.
That might be something that that might make sense to to have.
Cause it would be int- you know, it'd be interesting in the survey, I mean, granted, it would be better if, you know, someone who is more learned than myself was coming up with these questions, but it'd be interesting to send that out to the business owners and say, do you currently use plastic bags? Um, if you do, how many of those do you currently use per week? How many would you estimate you use per month, per year? Um, you know, I, how much do you spend on plastic bags, you know? Do you have a place for these to be recycled? Um, you know, what ti- what type of bag do you use? You like, you know, it'd be interesting, get that information and see what came back.
I think so, yeah.
I think, I think doing a survey, however, would preclude us doing anything in. If you pursue the survey route.
Okay.
I think our pursuing a non-invasive kind of, uh, let's have, if you're gonna sell plastic bags, you have to do this. If you're gonna sell plastic bags, uh, they have to be recyclable or or post, or made of post-recycled materials. I think any of that, if we if we do that while we're doing the survey, we're we're not.
Well, unless we have the survey open for like a a week, you know, we drafted the survey, sent it, and then, once we have the result, I mean, you can have, I think those survey monkey, you can set a timeframe.
I wonder, I wonder, I wonder how much we're gonna get a response. If you're, if you're, it, or would you consider this a trade, I'm just throwing this out a trade secret in some ways. Geez, if they know how many bags, then they know how many sales per, you know, sales per day we're doing. And if that's almost like a kind of.
Like, they wouldn't do that.
Well, I mean, like I said, those questions were. I don't know, I would rather ask somebody, I would rather, I think, try out, try that out on one story before I bring it to the to the schools.
A pilot survey, yeah.
At least, at least they could ask and see what the reaction was.
Uh-huh.
But I'd hate to create a survey and have everybody clam up and say, we're not gonna respond.
Yeah.
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 And then the the kids would be very discouraged, I'm sure.
Right.
Uh, so I think, I think we could do maybe a quick pilot version of questions.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So that's my suggestion, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it kinda depends on what the questions are, I was just throwing some of the.
I I think they're legitimate questions, and I think we should know those.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Um, so, so, but I I I don't think that we should, um, I think that for our next meeting, what we should do is come to the, to the floor, saying, all right, these are the things that I think are common sense things, um, and, you know, put those on the table, pick away at them, what do we think is realistic, what do we, what do, and then say, okay, now that we have these few things, let's do a little research, and let's write something down.
Uh-huh.
Um, cause then then we're at least moving forward, and I think, I I think there's definitely a parallel track here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so maybe the mayor, uh, maybe Anna Lawrence, cause I can't remember who told me that she wanted to, and I was like, why, I know her, I don't know why she didn't get in touch with me, but, hey, that's okay, um, but it would be great to have some engagement like that.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then we can have something that we have tangible, and we can write, we can tweak, and then if we like it, we can bring it forward, if we don't, we can
Mm-hmm.
decide to dismiss it, and who knows, maybe by the time we finish this, we, it'll be a moot point.
Yeah.
I mean, who knows?
Uh-huh.
Um, does that seem reasonable enough?
Yeah, I will, can I set a deadline for getting, I wanna write this all down?
Sure.
If I have a deadline of when to write that down by?
Well, let's, you guys, how about we just set, um, look at the calendar and say when our next meeting's gonna be? Which I'm thinking, if I am correct, is the fourteenth, so maybe the twenty-eighth?
Sure.
Wait, is today the fourteenth?
Today is the fourteenth.
Do you wanna set, um, I feel like we're having a lag in talking to the public about what's going on. So at the next committee meeting, like overall city council meeting, I mean, um.
Do you wanna do like a report out on it?
Yeah, I'm hoping to have something written by then, so when you're giving the report, you could just say, this is where we've been, this is where we're going, and here's our prior, you know, our priorities as a committee.
Sure.
Now, I think that would be helpful.
Sounds good to me. Okay, so I think that seems like a plan, and I did find questions here, so let me sh- um, let me share these with you.
What questions for?
Um, for food trucks.
Okay.
I found it.
Okay.
So.
Take us back to the beginning.
Yeah, bring it back to the beginning here. Cause if you guys have this, I mean, looking at it on my phone, it's pretty small. Uh, okay, Smith for city councillor, or Westfield?
Yeah, that'd be great.
JP, JP East Hampton?
JP, they had.
Yeah, my T Smith at East Hampton also goes through through that channel account.
Here we go. I added you in on this, so, um, so here's, want me to read the questions, and then, um, what I'll do is I'll read what I kind of came out, cause I wanted to have a rough draft tonight, I didn't quite get there.
Okay.
Um, but I did kinda jot some thoughts down that we can kind of use as a template.
Okay.
Um, so where should food truck, um, where should, where, basically, where should the food trucks be? Uh, food truck zones, would they have to specify where they will park? And if they have an annual permit, does this mean that they can't move around? The police department should weigh in on this. Uh, so my thoughts were, um, food trucks will need to be in defined catch areas of the city. Spots will be designated downtown, the parks, in the mill areas. Any exceptions, we'll need to have approval from the mayor's office.
Did you say you sent this to Whiskers now?
I did, I shared it with you.
All right. Should have it on my screen.
Uh, just click on the the question dot docs.
Got it.
Yes, yes, you're welcome.
That'll make it.
Yes, it'll make him easier. So, um, so I, you know, so one of the things that we'll have to do as a committee is say, and this is a little bit tedious, is to look at specific parking areas and say, where do we want to designate as a food truck zone? You know, for example, like the the last, uh, maybe the last two parking areas next to the promenade. I mean, which makes sense, cause it's, you know, it's not too close to restaurants, and it's on like a tour spot. Maybe designate a couple spots in the park, the municipal parking lot.
Would you wanna tie public safety in on that at all?
Yeah, I think, I think we would, you know, once we determined exactly where those spots were, we'd have them weigh in on what they thought of it.
Uh-huh.
Um, but I think part of that would be a regulation that they would have to stay within the parking spot, like they couldn't, if they're in a parking lot, they couldn't go across like three parking spaces. They'd have to fit into one parking space, which I think makes sense, especially as we look at the mills.
Right.
Which, cause I know right now, a lot of food trucks are parking across multiple parking spots, which is, you know, which is impacting where people can park.
Right.
Um, and I know that the mill owners do not like that.
Yeah.
Um, so, question number two, in the areas of tight parking, should there be a limit of, limited to the number of food trucks? Like Cottage Street, um, Mill Street parking lots, how to determine how many? Um, the areas that are defined will limit the number of food trucks that will be allowed in certain areas. So as we look at this, I think, you know, if we look at a couple downtown, a couple in the municipal lot, maybe a couple on Union Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, the mills would have to have more, but thi- this would not preclude food trucks to be parked on public property. I mean, um, private property. So, you know, if if, um, Brass Cat wants to have the food truck in his parking lot,
Mm-hmm.
that would not be covered under the catch area, like, they would be welcome to do that because it's on private property. Right?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does, I was just wondering how sources are possible, like, that's not fair, cause we, so imagine, imagine if right next door to the Brass Cat was another restaurant. Or Amy's Place, I guess, would be the closest restaurant, or Whiskers.
Mm-hmm.
Having a food truck in the middle of that, just cause it's on private property, would that be causing issues?
Well, it hasn't so far.
Uh-huh.
And they've been doing it.
Okay.
So, um, the the mothership gourmet has been out there, let's say, almost every weekend. Um, and I I haven't heard anything from Amy, I mean, I I I know Amy, um, and she has never mentioned that to me.
Okay.
Um, and Whiskers has a kitchen.
Right.
And I haven't heard anything from them either, so, um, I don't necessarily know if that's a litmus test, you know, like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but I guess, uh, it's something to think about, um.
I guess with number three, one of the things, or or with both of these, there just seems to, in my mind, there's a big difference between the everyday food truck and the event-sponsored food truck.
Right.
Um, so is there any?
There is a, there is a, um, permitting difference.
Okay.
So, um, so how long, well, you know, so say there's a street festival.
Yeah.
Here, like, um, so that's why, one of the things I said, general parking hours, which I can't, I I'd have to relook up, I was doing this up the time, I think it's like maybe from seven to eleven.
Uh-huh.
But I said seven to midnight, because there's no overnight parking, um, maybe there is overnight parking. Uh, but I think it should be limited to, um, certain hours. Like, I don't think a food truck should be able to just plant themselves on Cottage Street and live there permanently.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense, you know, um, so.
Okay, so. Does it matter how many weeks in a row they're there? So I understand in operation only from this, these periods over a twenty-four hour period, but like with campgrounds, you can't have your camper there for more than two weeks, or you're considered a permanent resident.
Right, right, right.
So would we wanna look into permanent residency versus?
Yeah, I mean, um, I'm tr- I'm trying to think how this would work, because, like, the only point of reference I really have is the food trucks that have been coming in East Hampton this year. And so, like, you might have a food truck that's coming like every Friday and Saturday to the mills to service the breweries.
Right.
Um, but if we did like a a weekly limit, then they they wouldn't be able to come every week, and they are now. And I don't think it's a problem that they are. Um, but I think, you know, maybe what we would do is we'd add a clause that, um, if the, um, you know, if there's some sort of question about, um, the location or duration of, um, it's something that would be addressed by the mayor's office and the police department.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like, put in a caveat, like, if someone's abusing, uh, you know, the privilege that this is kind of allowing, then there would be a way to to, you know, address that.
Can I back up a second?
Yeah.
So a food truck comes into town today.
Yes.
And they park in one of the parking spaces that don't have, that don't have restrictions, a posted restriction. There are no two-hour limits, as far as I know, let's say.
I think in the set, in Main Street there is, on Cottage.
In Cottage, in Cottage, is there a two-hour?
I don't, uh, I can't remember if it's a two-hour limit, I don't think so, I think it's just.
I don't, I don't think we have limits up there.
I think there is some sort, there is some sort of parking posted, I'd, but I'd have to check.
So, so the presumption is that somebody could stay all day?
Yeah.
Today, if they came in, they could stay all day in a parking spot, and that happened.
Right.
Or they could move and move along to the next spot.
Next spot, yeah.
That's available, every, if there was a limit every two hours, and they set up shop again, then slightly different location in the same zone. And we need an ordinance because?
Um, well, right now, there's nothing saying that they can't just park there and stay for an unlimited amount of time, if the parking doesn't.
Except that a regular parking regulation would say, okay, you got a lot, we're not in a spot, okay.
Right. If there is one, right. Like, um, I don't think, I don't think the lot is posted yet. Cause remember, they were ordering signs, like, they changed the the hours on the the lot, so, I mean, they could just go park in there, stay. Don't think they'd get a lot of business. But, you know, like, one of the things that we would put in here is, like, no parking on sidewalks, no parking across crosswalks, you know, like, no doing, no.
You can't do that already.
You can't do that already.
You're, 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 if somebody parked on a sidewalk, the police officer's gonna come along and say, hey, you know, uh, there's gotta be a regulation.
But it would. Come along, yeah, yeah, yeah. Unless.
Sidewalk, and it, and can't park in a crosswalk.
Unless. Right, right.
So whatever you do, do it.
Yeah, unless there was, you know, a a special, uh, exception for, you know, like, if they, there was a sidewalk where you could pull up, and they were, you know, like, maybe, it it was allowing for full access to the sidewalk, but maybe the sidewalk is considered to go, you know, six inches beyond the sidewalk into the grass, but they were in the grass, you know, there might be some sort of weird exceptions like that, that we'd not, might need to look at. You know, so for like special events. Um, but I, so, but the parking.
Well, generally, on special events, the streets get closed.
Streets can be closed.
And in, you set up according to wherever you go.
Then they're in the street, however, right. Like, for exam- at the Millside Park, they they pull into the park and park in the gra- in the back field. The food trucks are in the back field.
Okay.
Um. So, which is, which is fine, you know, um, and one of the questions was, do we limit the distance of, you know, from food trucks can be to a restaurant? And, other than just saying there's designated spots for food truck, I don't think that we can do that. Um.
I'm not sure that we can, no.
Yeah, um, and then.
In that, in that direct fashion, yes, that, then we have a problem.
Yeah, yeah, um, private versus public property, um, I think that, and I meant to say, we're a public property here, but private property would be bound by the Board of Health Oversight still. You know, so, um, if I was gonna have a birthday party for my kid, and I wanted a food truck in my yard, then that's.
Go hire one.
Yeah, go hire one.
Go ahead and go.
As long as they're, as long as they're certified with the Board of Health.
Yeah, Board of Health and that issue's been taken.
And and they're, and I I think, one of the things, I mean, and this is up to, this is up to us, but I think that food trucks that are, you'd be in the city of East Hampton, um, should have to have a food truck permit for the city of East Hampton. And, you know, and I think we talked to Barbara about what that fee could be, but maybe a hundred dollars for the year, but it's, it licenses them to do business in the city. And then if you wanted to come in and do a special event, it, twenty dollars, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think that makes, that makes sense to me. Um. And what is this? Oh, that's what I put down here, a food fo- a food truck fee for permitting. Um, hundred dol- and this was just, I think I feel, I might have heard Barbara say, this hundred dollars a year for a blanket license. Um, and then saying a special event, food truck permit would be twenty dollars for a special event. Um, cause that would just, that would help us offset the fees of the health agent that has to, um, because, so.
I am, I am, of course.
Yes.
Backing, I I agree with, you know, a fee for the si- for the year, maybe also an option for a day fee. If for for someone coming for a special event, that all makes sense. Backing up just to the the party and private property.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, at first I said, yeah, sure, go ahead, are we selling food at private property, or are we just providing the party, catering the party?
It could be either, probably.
Like, catering the party makes sense, having, selling food, I have a problem with a, in a private residence.
But, well, but.
It's private property, it's not public property, but you shouldn't be able, like, that's like setting up a commercial business on private property.
So I had.
Well, so here. Here you go.
Maybe.
The kielbasa stand across from the Rotary, across from Plasky Park.
Yep.
That's on private property.
Commercial location.
They're selling food.
Commercial location.
Right. Um, but it's, you know, it's, it's private.
But it's private, but it's commercial, zone for business, I mean, it it's zone for business at 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 the Brass Cat.
Right.
Okay.
So I had another, like.
A residence is owned for a living and not for setting up, should somebody say, geez, this this corner over on, uh, let's say, Plain Street and Strong makes sense, because it's a busy intersection.
Right.
Let's go to this corner and set up a, a stand from, for for an hour to, and sell catered food to people who are going home, and 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 I might stop and buy some. It might be a great business idea, but I don't think it makes sense to private property.
I think there needs to be a distinction, though, because I've gone to weddings in East Hampton in people's private homes where they've hired like a barbecue food truck to cater the whole event, which I agree, is different from that food truck coming out and selling their food. But in a sense, they are selling the food, it's just been prepaid for as a private.
Right.
It's a catered event, right, I mean, it's like, it's like hiring a caterer to come and 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 set up a tent and distribute the food to your, to to your guests.
Right.
Yeah. But you might, I mean, you could, cause I mean, but you could also, at your private, uh, say you had a private party, instead of having an open bar, you might decide to have a cash bar. You know, so that, I mean, that's kind of the same principle. And where people are at your premises for an event, but you're. And where people are at your premises for an event, but you're like, you're gonna have to pay for the booze.
But I don't, I don't think on a private property, on private property, you could have a, or you should have a cash bar.
I think you could, I, I think, I believe you can.
Because I think that, that, I've seen, I've seen that turn into bars in zones that are.
Yeah, obviously, and that's, see, the underlying zoning would, would, would require it to.
Well, it, it.
Because.
How do you make the distinction?
Well, um, so Fort Hill, um, so they're zoned industrial.
Right.
Right, so they.
They have a, they have a permit, I'm not sure we wanna go there.
Well, but they're, but that's private property, so they can have a food truck come onto the premises and sell food. It's private property.
It seems like an ancillary sort of thing.
However, that, that corner on Strong and Line, I think that's where you put it, is zone resi.
Strong and Plain, yeah.
Zone residential.
Right.
Um, and so if they just parked there and started a, a non-conforming use within the zoning, that would not fly. So I think that the underlying zoning would dictate that, so that person would be not able to do that because the underlying zoning wouldn't allow.
For the commercial use.
For commercial use, but that kielbasa truck is on.
Even in a commercial zone.
But it's on private property.
Right.
And they're selling the property. So I think that's, that's where, um, and I, and I think really where, I mean, most food trucks are not gonna be looking to set up at a residential corner, they're gonna be looking to set up at, you know, a, a business. So I, I, I don't think that that's gonna be a major issue where we're gonna be like, oh, now damn, food truck's in the backyard again. They're trying to sell to the neighbors, you know, uh, and it, it, it's funny, cause that brought up the idea of like an ice cream truck.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's kind of a food truck.
You mean, you know, food truck?
Yeah, and it's in, it's in residential areas.
Doesn't stay in residential. Doesn't stay in residential area.
But that's interesting.
Stops theoretically for five minutes.
Yeah.
Exit sales and moves on.
But if we, if we said that, I, I, I mean, that's, that's an interesting.
Food truck is very interesting.
It's an interesting kind of.
Nuance to food trucks.
Didn't really think about that until just this minute, when I was thinking about food trucks in residential areas, I'm like, oh, there's ice cream trucks.
Yeah, I've seen ice cream trucks.
I've seen, it's like a van, I've seen an ice cream van in East Hampton, not for a while, but yeah, I've seen it. So anyway, I, I think that, I think that that is, uh, you know, worth talking about. Um, making sure that we're not opening up some sort of Pandora's box. But I do think that for, for the most part, a food truck on private property is gonna not be, like, not be bound by this ordinance, where we're saying any other food truck in the city has to be in these spots. If you're coming, if you're bringing a food truck to a private property, then that, we can't say, oh, you can't be there, cause you're not in one of the spots, you know.
Does that bring, so if you have different businesses in the middle of one eighty?
Yeah.
And there's a food truck that's coming in, is taking up a bunch of the parking spaces. Could, let's say, Carissa, could she call the city and be like, you know what? My customers don't have a place to park, cause this food truck is here, I would like the police to come over and do something about it. Are we saying that because it's on private property, would say that's a private matter?
No, because it was, so that's, the mills are a whole nother ball of wax.
Okay.
Because it's not necessarily, it's, it's like, it's a quasi private public.
I, but assuming that the pa, the truck was not parked on the private lot, but rather, I mean, on the public side, but only on that private.
Right, and I think that's where we're gonna have to bring Jessica into this, because, and they're still working out the easements. I know that the owners would like to have control, I don't necessarily know that, um, they have control by right, don't necess, I don't know that. Um, cause I think because public funds paid for that, the whole parking lot. I think that they have, that there's some gray area that we're gonna have to figure out.
And I guess the other, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Is there like, um, when we're looking at safety of food trucks and what, I, I can't visualize those things as well as just having a food truck parked there. Is there a way we could pick a day where we could have some random food truck, just agree to go to different spaces in town? So we could measure whether or not it creates a distraction from drivers or a blockage? Do we need to get that into it?
I don't, I mean, I, like, it might make sense for us to, if we go to the mills this weekend, I guarantee there'll be food trucks.
Yeah.
Um, even, what's today, Wednesday? Probably, probably not tonight, but probably tomorrow night. If you drove down behind there, bet you in front of New City or in front of abandoned, you would find a food truck and, you know, you could kind of take a look at it and see what you think as far as, you know, if we had one parked over there. I don't necess, I don't necessarily think in the areas that we'd be looking at, they would be causing like a distraction. I think that they would be more of, um, you know, like they're, they're not close to corners, like where they're gonna be blocking the views. I don't think we would, um, at least we shouldn't pick any spaces that would, you know, have that type of property. So let me, let's just get through the rest of these and that, that way, um, we can see if any other.
Have you talked to any of the food truck operators? Like do they, does this sound something to them that they're expecting?
I haven't, I haven't gone through this with them, but I think that this is what a lot of communities have in place. So, uh, who would be the food truck police?
Okay.
Then for, the force, and I'd said, and this is just a thought, the health agent with the police able to act in health agents. Non-present.
Okay.
The health agent, I don't think is on duty at nine o'clock at night necessarily, and the police there are, they are on duty. So if we, if we add them into the mix as an enforcement agent of, you know, saying, oh, you're in the wrong parking space, I mean, they do parking anyway.
Yeah.
So it might be a natural ma, mi, match for them.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, the, the mills have guidelines about parking and notification of the mill owners. So, um, if, if, if a food truck is going to, and this is something we would have to work out, I don't know how this would necessarily work, cause I know it's a public-private thing, but I know the mill owners would probably appreciate knowing that there's food trucks coming.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, because I think Mike, the owner of Mill one eighty, might have some sort of easement for some sort of food truck down there, and I don't know what the details of that are at all.
I mean, you say easement for a food truck, I'm not that much sure.
Well, so the mill owners all are entering into easement agreements around that whole new parking lot and, you know, so like, um, kind of who controls, who maintains, um, and I believe that there's an easement for a food tr, a food truck that could be even permanent or semi-permanent in that back parking lot. But I don't know the details of that, so that's something we'd have to find out. Uh, and then, so I, and, and that's probably gonna be one of, let's face it, that's probably the hottest spot. I mean, really, when we're talking about this ordinance, this is like one of the main things that we're looking at is the mills. Because that's, so far, that's where all the food trucks have been going, other than, you know, in Brass Cat parking lot. Um, but here's one of the ones that.
And the farmer's market.
And the farmer's market, which I think would, is great. I think that, I mean, the, the, anything we can do to draw more people to the farmer's market. I mean, I don't know if you guys have ever been to Santa Fe, but the farmer's market in Santa Fe is like off the charts, so cool. So cool, like they have live bands, it's like a, it's a scene, like people come from everywhere to go to this farmer's market. That would be great, but, um, one of the things that I don't think anybody's addressed or figured out, or I don't think any of these food trucks are collecting taxes, food tax. Um, and that's interesting, so I don't know how we approach that, like, you know.
Is there any state law to guard that?
Very clear, I think the state, well, obviously, the tax goes to where?
Where the food truck is housed. Is housed.
And they, and, and the pay, the tax gets paid there, because presumably that's where the food comes in.
Right.
To that location, it gets processed presumably at that location to some extent. The trucks presumably are stored there.
Right, so it would be their, their home location.
Home lo, wherever the home location is, gets the tax. Is there a way to encourage East Hampton?
I don't know, that's, that's what I was saying, like, can we, can we create an ordinance that encourages a, a survey? You know, so we can house food trucks at, at those mills, you know?
Right.
Cause then we could get some of that tax revenue. But I think actually, now that you say that, I think that that's probably correct. Even though the, the transaction's happening in East Hampton, the money is changing hands and it, it might be good just to get clarification on that.
Right, I, I'm not, you know, I'm not the D O R, so I can't give an opinion, but that, that's my understanding.
Would be interesting.
It would be good to get that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Visual.
The visual word. Um, so that's what I have so far. Um, it's a little bit more concrete than what we had last time.
Oh, I think so too.
And now it's, now it's to us kind of crafting it a little bit and working out some of these. So here's my, here's what I pledge to you guys, that I will start a draft in ordinance form of these things. And then we start getting some of the answers to the questions that we have and tweak the ordinance as we go, depending on what the answers are. Um, does that seem fair?
So that sounds great, it is, do you, I wonder if access, what you, the file that you sent me?
I think, did I send it to you?
Yeah, you sent it to me, but I, you have to.
Oh, I have to, I have to.
You have to authorize the access.
Yes, you can edit this. I will say yes.
Okay, good. So thank you.
I will say yes.
And I think, um.
I think one of the.
How do I do?
I, I've seen that in the last couple, couple of days that we have for liquor license approved for, um, full liquor license for Luthiers, Mill one eighty and a couple other places.
Okay.
I know that there's been a lot of, um, pushback to having so many alcohol choices within East Hampton. And so I just would like to add that I think when we're talking about this at city council, saying that there are a number of food options that don't include alcohol, we're not only interested in making East Hampton a big bar scene. Yeah, one way to incorporate that is also looking at food trucks. I'd appreciate it if you did include that, because seeing, every time I see more, we, we knew what was happening with the licenses and now that they're coming through, that argument just keeps revamping itself.
Yeah, so, um, Luthiers, I, I didn't see that, so has Luthiers got it?
Luthiers, Mill one eighty, the tattoo shop.
That's gonna be really cool, actually. What they're try, I, I, did you go, were you guys at the meeting? No, I don't think you were. I, I was at the meeting when they were putting, it's, they're restoring the theater to its nineteen twenties, like.
Yeah.
And they're gonna have some really cool events there.
There's actually been a huge, um, there have been, they're trying to collect histories of the city of East Hampton.
Yeah.
Um, to be able to display there and everything.
It's gonna be, it's a really cool project.
Yeah.
So, and unfortunately, a lot of times in order to do things like that, you need to have, you know, like m, most restaurants have a difficult time opening it up. You know, so, um, but, uh, well, so do we have anything else on our?
No, I think we do, we have more to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Second, I.
All right.
So we're adjourned, seven oh four.